Good evening, everybody. This is the Howard's Planning Board, January fourteenth. Excuse me. This is informing you that the town is going to video and audio record this matter. And if anybody else in attendance is going to video or audio, they are required to notify the Chair prior to the beginning of the meeting. Is there anybody? I don't see anybody. Thank you. First matter is the matter of PB 2019-27, Witchmere Harbor Real Estate LLC. And it's my understanding, is there anybody here representing them?
No, they sent a letter requesting a continuance.
Okay.
To the twenty-eighth of January.
So I move that we vote to continue PB 2019-27, Witchmere Harbor Real Estate LLC, to January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, no earlier than six thirty P.M.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next matter is Royal Apartments LLC, Alex Barden representative. And...
You do need to open that hearing, sir.
So Alex Barden representative seeks approval of a multifamily use special permit in the Howard Center overlay district and a site plan review special permit for proposed use and additional parking and other appetites pursuant, excuse me, to the Code of the Town of Howard, three twenty-five dash fifty-one point D and fifty-one point O and three twenty-five point fifty-five. Property is located at three twenty-eight Bank Street, map forty-one, parcel N four in the M dash R dash L Howard Center overlay and historic districts. And my understanding is that are you...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. My name is Ben Zender and I'm here on behalf of Royal Apartments LLC, along with Alex Barden, who's represented for the company. And we did not notify the butters as we were required to under your procedures. And I, for that, I apologize for bringing you all out here tonight, but we would request a continuous to the twenty-eighth of January as well.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
So I move that we continue the matter of PB 2019-45, Royal Apartments LLC, to January twenty-eight, two thousand twenty, no earlier than six thirty P.M.
Second. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a roll call vote.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, David. We're out of tune with this.
We'll start with you, David.
It's okay. I did say aye before.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Aye.
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 Continue to January twenty-eighth.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next matter is PB 2019-46, nineteen dash forty-six, Green Skies Renewable Energy as an applicant. And All Points Technology Corporation, PC, as a representative, seeks approval of site plan review special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, three twenty-five dash fifty-five, in conjunction with paragraph three twenty-five, article twenty-three, to establish a large-scale photovoltaic array at Cranbury Valley Golf Course owned by the Town of Howard. The proposal consists of both a ground-mounted array and a rooftop array on the Cart Barn building. Property located at one eighty-three Oak Street, map sixty-one, parcel H one, in the RR and WR zoning districts. Before we move this, I'd just ask a question. Should, should the golf course also be in part of this application?
No, because it's owned by the town.
So they don't have to be.
They signed off on the application, but Green Skies Renewable Energy is the applicant.
So I move that we continue PB 2019-46, Green Skies Renewable Energy, to January twenty-eight, two thousand twenty, no earlier than six thirty P.M.
Second. We'll have a roll call vote. We'll listen to you first.
David.
David. I think he said yes.
He did say yes.
Aye.
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 Matter is continued to January twenty-eighth.
Oops. That's wrong.
Next matter is under new business. PB 2019-50, nineteen dash fifty, Davenport Realty Trust, as prospective buyer care of Paul E. Sweetser, PLS, estate of Elizabeth M. Marsline owner, seeks endorsement of a two-lot approval, not required plan entitled Plan of Land in Howard, Mass., prepared for Davenport Realty Trust, dated December tenth, two thousand nineteen, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, chapter eighty-one, P, and four hundred dash nine, of the codes of the Town of Howard for property located at four twenty-four Queen Anne Road, map seventy, parcel B one. Parcel is in the RM zoning district. Sir.
Paul Sweetser representing. I'm thinking this is going to be a pretty short night for you guys.
Well, bring a pillow on the twenty-eighth if you're going to be here, because that's going to be a killer.
I'm glad I got this in on this time. Obviously, you have in front of you one piece of land that we've divided into two lots. Both lots have the, contain the amount of required area in the zoning. Both of them have more than the adequate frontage on Queen Anne Road.
Not great western, as it says in the statute court. Oops.
Okay.
That's it in a nutshell.
Charlie, did you want to say a few things?
Absolutely. So for an A&R plan, the board has three options: endorse the plan, deny the plan detailing specifically why it does not meet the standards for endorsement, or take no action, in which case the town clerk then can act on this after the statutory time. In my opinion, the proposal does meet the minimum criteria for endorsement of an A&R pursuant to the code of Harwich, section four hundred dash nine, and Mass. General Law, chapter forty-one, excuse me, section eighty-one, P, which is adequate frontage for the zoning district, one hundred and fifty feet, with adequate access on Queen Anne Road. Each lot does contain forty thousand square feet, however, that is not consideration for endorsement by the board, but it does meet the zoning requirements. Health has indicated that the property is not located within water recharge. Fully compliant septic systems will be required prior to any building permit issuance. No variances from state or local regulations will be granted for new construction. Private drinking wells are to be used, if private drinking wells are to be used, water quality testing is necessary before any permits can be issued. It's also important to note that these properties are tentatively scheduled in Phase Four of the sewer project, which is way down the road, and conservation has indicated that they, that it is not within their jurisdiction.
And basically, we either approve it or not approve it.
You either vote to endorse it or not, and if you choose not to, you have to say specifically why it doesn't meet the minimum requirements, which in this case, in my opinion, clearly does, or you can take no action at all.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay.
So I move that we find that, adopt the following findings, the fact that the plan does not constitute a subdivision, as the way is shown on the plan on the town road, provides safe and adequate access.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
We'll do a roll call.
Aye.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And so it is allowed.
So I move that we vote to endorse the approval not required plan entitled Plan of Land in Harwich, Massachusetts, as prepared for Davenport Realty Trust, prepared by Paul E. Sweetser, PLS, dated December tenth, two thousand nineteen, scale one inch equals forty feet.
Do you need a second?
Yes.
We have a second?
No, second.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. There's nobody here. Well, there's somebody here, but there are no other attendees.
It's a roll call again.
So we'll have a roll call vote from... David?
Aye.
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 And so it's approved.
And I've got three plans going to the right, and I'm going to start with Craig on this end.
This is a special pen?
This is the special pen. A year's gone by already, huh?
It's gone. It's, it's over a year. Yep. Yeah? I'm legal here. Looks like it agrees with you. Actually, I am enjoying it, I tell you. Except that there's too many calls coming in sometimes. Oh, I left it in the car. Good. Oh, it's a bad kind of good. Well, it's actually a good kind of good, because I'm still taking it. I don't get stressed out about the stuff anymore.
Thanks. But you miss us.
Oh, I do. I do miss everybody I work with.
And you're being recorded now. You need to come just...
I know that. That's exactly why I'm saying what I'm...
I'm five months and eighteen days, but...
How many hours?
I think it's twenty-one. I'm in my thirty-fourth year.
Yeah.
I was twelve when I started everything. He can't sign.
He can't. Okay. Is that it?
Brady.
Okay. Next matter on the agenda is the...
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Review and approve the annual report for two thousand nineteen. I did read that.
You missed one.
Covenant release, number two.
Oh. Covenant release at one nineteen ninety-three Tompkins subdivision, Novatney Road.
So this is an interesting one. This was actually a subdivision built in nineteen ninety-three, and the covenants were released in nineteen ninety-five. They were never recorded, but it's probably a good thing, because they referenced the wrong plan.
Oh, wonderful.
So there is a closing on one of the parcels. It's being resold, and the attorney for the buyer did their due diligence and found the lots were never released from covenant. I mean, it's all the requirements, met all the requirements back in nineteen ninety-five. So to clean everything up, what, and I did not charge a filing fee for this, because it was not their fault. It had already been paid way back when. So they are seeking a release, a full release of covenant for the Novatney subdivision. And I do believe I provided you with a memo with a recommended motion, I think.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Comments? Go ahead, Mary. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I move that we vote to approve the covenant release for lots one, two, and three of the Novatney Road subdivisions.
Second.
Okay. And we'll have a roll call vote. I'm listening.
Oh, you have to say David, because he doesn't...
David.
Aye.
You don't vote?
Aye.
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 And the covenant release has been approved.
Okay. I have two copies here that I'm asking you to sign. That way, if we ever lose one again, we'll get it right. So sign up there, if you would, on any one of those ones. Because I found the original covenants and had them certified and sent them, you know, covenant releases, and the paralegal got back to me, she goes, "There's a problem." I said, "What's the matter?" She goes, "It references the wrong subdivision."
Oh, bruh.
I went, "Oh, that's a problem." Very busy year. Very busy year.
We haven't done this yet.
That's next.
Actually, the annual report's next.
Okay.
Annual report. Yeah. In a minute.
Was there a second page?
Nope.
To the annual report? Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
I don't think so.
My page ends with, and the nomination was filed with the...
Oh, well... I have a second page. I can read the second page to you.
Thank you.
Copy? Yeah. Would you like copies of the second page? Or you want me to just read it to you?
Read is fine.
Okay. So are we moving on to that one, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Okay. So you've all read the first page. Apologies for the second page. So it goes on to say, I'll read, "The Board of Selectmen approved the nomination on September sixteenth, and the nomination was filed with the Cape Cod Commission on September seventeenth. The Cape Cod Commission accepted the nomination on October third, and a hearing was held by the Commission in Harwich on October twenty-second. Full Commission voted unanimously to approve the West Harwich DCPC on November fourteenth, and the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates voted unanimously on December fourth to approve the county ordinance..." Now I'm lost. "...to approve the county ordinance for the DCPC. And on December eleventh, the Barnstable County Commissioners voted two to one to approve and sign the West Harwich DCPC ordinance. Several members of the Planning Board attended these additional hearings. Now the work will begin to draft the necessary zoning amendments to comply with the DCPC ordinance. The town will have twelve months to draft and approve bylaws, regulations, et cetera." New paragraph. "The Board began discussions on potential zoning amendments for the May twenty twenty annual town meeting. Currently, the Board has one opening for an alternative member. The Planning Board would like to acknowledge Charlene Greenhout, Town Planner, Elaine Banta, Planning Assistant, and Katie..." I already always say your name wrong. Tenalia. Tenalia, for their invaluable work for the Board. The Board would also like to thank the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of Harwich for the continued support of the Planning Board efforts. Respectfully submitted, Joseph P. Parland, Planning Board Chair."
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about it?
Second.
I read it.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Did it say alternate or alternative? Member?
It says alternative. It should say alternate.
I think.
Yes.
Okay. And as I understand it, the motion is to adopt the, or accept the annual report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We need a roll call. Yeah.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
And it has been adopted.
Very well-written, Joe.
I thought so when I read it at home.
It's probably the hundredth one I've written over the years for different boards and committees.
December seventeenth minutes.
Yes. You need them?
Nope. I have a second.
Okay.
Okay, we have the issue of the adoption of the minutes of the Planning Board for December seventeenth.
So I just have two quick typos.
Go ahead.
On page five of six, in the heading Meeting Minutes, there's a typo on Meeting Minutes, and there's a typo on Discussion like below it.
You don't like Mentos?
Mentos.
And where's the second one?
Discussion.
Oh, my gosh!
You got interrupted, that's all.
We both missed it. We'll fix those.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the minutes of December seventeenth as amended?
Just one comment.
Go ahead.
My recor, to my very extremely limited experience, this is one of the most complicated meetings I've attended. I thought the meeting minutes were just exemplary, so whatever typos are involved are irrelevant. Thank you for recording all this in great and excruciating detail.
It is excruciating. If you relive this. Oh!
Oh!
And we lost David. He does have problems with you.
So?
So.
Yeah.
Do you want me to redial or just...
Nah. Okay. Can we get a motion to adopt those minutes?
So I move that we adopt and place on file the Planning Board meeting minutes from Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Did you ask for a vote?
We did.
Okay, sorry.
Unanimous yea.
I did not vote, because I was not at this.
Okay.
Minutes will so reflect.
One.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, we have some old business. Did you want to give us some?
Absolutely.
Comments?
So after the last meeting, the Board did ask me to work on two zoning amendments, the first being with regard to essential services and removing that definition from section three twenty-five dash two and deleting it within the use table, section three twenty-five dash thirteen, table one, paragraph two, public and quasi-public uses, item number three, essential services, facilities, utilities. So I have prepared that zoning article for you. If the Board is willing to vote to, I usually do a memo, my apologies, it would be the Board, the Board would be voting to refer this to the Board of Selectmen, so that they can refer it back to you to start the public hearing process.
To be eventually entered into the town meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about the proposed article?
And this is simply about a matter of eliminating a definitional conflict within the code, right?
That's correct.
I think it's great.
And in the, and in the explanation, I put the language in there, what it, what the two mean, and that it would delete the conflict.
And if you vote, you're voting to send it to the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So we're saying municipal use is allowable as a right. Right?
Yes. Because it is right now.
Right, but...
Across the board.
But yet, there's still special permit requirements.
If it triggers site plan review, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So like the work being done at the golf course, when the cart barn. The work at the harbor.
And that, those are exactly what I'm...
Those all trigger site plan.
Those are exactly what I'm thinking of.
Yes. So those still trigger site plan.
So they still trigger site plan, so there's still a site plan special permit?
Yes.
It's just that the use is allowable as a matter of right, and removing essential services removes the conflict?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. We have a motion then to...
So I move that we vote to send the proposed zoning change to...
The Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen for their consideration, and then referral back to us for...
Not even their consideration for their referral back to the Board to start the public hearing process?
So let me rephrase. I vote that we, I move that we vote to refer the zoning change before, which is the deletion of essential services, to the Board of Selectmen for their referral back to the Planning Board to go through the public hearing process, so that we could take further action and potentially vote at a town meeting.
Second?
Second, sir.
Okay. All those in favor?
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's therefore referred?
Hey, sorry about that motion.
That's what they make tapes for. The second is the industrial zone, and I'm not asking you to vote on this tonight, because we actually realized that a parcel is wrong on the assessor's map. So that the explanation, I have a more detailed explanation of how the zoning parameters will be for the new district. In, let's see. If you can see up here, there's actually a lot in this area that is shown in the wrong place. It needs to get moved down. The town engineer is working with me to make that change, so that we can make sure that the zoning map that we're amending is correct. So for the meeting on the twenty-eighth, we hope to have that for you. If not, it'll be February eleventh, which we're still good with getting it on the warrant. It just means our public hearing will be close to town meeting, which, that's just the way it's going to be. So we do need to make that correction on the, on the assessor's map before we can get the explanation and the outline correct.
And take no action tonight.
Take no action tonight, but I just wanted to tell you where we're at.
Thank you.
Generally, what I have provided for you to amend the Code of Harwich, blah, 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 and the map, and we just need the date of the map, and like I said, hopefully we'll have that for you on the twenty-eighth of January, if not, definitely the eleventh.
Okay, thank you. Any briefings or reports by board members?
A question for Charlene.
Go ahead.
So the movement of the boundary is, it's not adding or changing, or adding or deleting any properties to the zoning district.
No, I don't believe that it is. It's just, it's making it meter. Because some of the parcels out there have recorded plans at the Registry of Deeds, some do not. So to keep it clean, we're just referencing map and parcels and bounds on map and parcels based on the assessor's map, but that one being in the wrong place, it, it messes up the description, so we need to get that clean.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other briefings or reports from members? Ma'am?
So I can tell you, we have CPC on Thursday night. It is the anticipated that we will be voting on all the articles, or fourteen before us at this point, was fifteen, now fourteen. So there are a lot of big-ticket items, and it will be, anticipate a long evening. So if anybody is, wants to come and attend, and see, it is six o'clock here in this room Thursday night.
How much money you're going to spend?
A lot. Maybe. There were a lot of applications.
I thought so, yeah. That's why I asked.
I do believe that we have enough money now.
Yet with the removal of that one.
Because one got, one, one was withdrawn.
What withdrew?
Deacon's folly.
Right.
Because it got sold.
It was a joint application between the housing authority, the Housing Trust and the Conservation Commission.
Actually, they're real estate and open space.
Okay. Sorry.
I didn't think it was the Housing Trust, because my son's on that.
No, it is the Housing Trust.
No, it is the Housing Trust.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. He's on the Housing Committee.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
It's, I want to say there's about three million dollars available.
Wow. And you're going to spend pretty much all of it?
We'll see. We'll see Thursday night.
I mean, if it's, I understand. Yeah, yeah.
See Thursday night.
Great. Any other reports?
Can I just give a little shout-out? So the town received twenty thousand dollars grant money to prepare its Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, MVP for short. And we are holding a stakeholders workshop on January thirty-first. It is pretty much by invite. We do have some available slots. On the town website, there is a link to the survey related to the MVP. So please go on the town website and take a look at the survey. Please fill it out. We need as much input as we can. We're looking at the various vulnerabilities of the town based on natural disasters, sea level rise, that kind of thing. And it, after the tornado that people said we'd never have, it's quite timely. So definitely take a look at the town website, take the survey. So, definitely take a look at the town website, take the survey. We do have some available slots, so if folks do want to attend, um, let me know. You gotta let me know via email. We're gonna put you on the list, and, you know, we'll let you know the week before if you, if you can attend or not. Because we do have to limit the number of people attending because we do have limited space and, and other things. It can't be too many, but we also don't want too few.
And what's the date again?
It is Friday, um, January thirty-first. But you do have to RSVP. If you just show up, um, please don't. Please get in touch with me, and, and we'll steer you in the right direction, but.
Time again, please.
It is thirty-first January. It's from eight-thirty in the morning to four-thirty in the afternoon. It is a day-long session. We will be providing lunch and snacks. Cindy Williams, who's in the audience, our executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, is part of the core team on this, and will also be participating along with a number of departments in town and other invited stakeholders throughout the town.
But is she gonna provide the lunch?
No, actually Linda from the council, from the community center, our town chef, will be doing lunch.
Okay.
Which is always very good.
Quick question. Is this gonna be an exercise in fitting the local kind of contingencies or exigencies to an existing, like, template?
It can.
Or is this starting from, we're gonna build something aggregate from the bottom up?
It can.
Okay.
Yeah. That's one of the things that we're gonna look at. We do have an approved, um, uh, multi-hazard mitigation plan that we got approved a couple years ago. So, we will work from that. What that plan did not look at was things like sea level rise, climate change, you know, those kind of things. It was, okay, what's happening right now? This is a plan that's looking to the future to figure out where our facilities are. Do we have facilities that are gonna be in danger, be cut off? Those kinda things. Another element that, um, you know, has not really been talked about, but we had the issue about a year and a half ago, we had a fire at Hawksnest. And that was an issue. And that's something that hadn't really been talked about. So, those are the kinda things we're gonna talk about.
Isn't that road up in there an issue?
I'm not gonna get into that. Depends on who you talk to. So, but, you know, there's.
I know, there's been a longstanding.
Yeah. There, there's been fires at Bell's Neck, um, which thankfully were put out quickly. But we have some areas in town that could be vulnerable to fires, to flood, to all kinds of things. So.
I received some calls. That's the only reason I raised it.
Charlene, were we responsible for the readying of Hawksnest down to the beach?
Are we what?
Is the town responsible for Hawksnest Road?
Um, I can't answer that. I don't, I honestly don't know. I think a portion of it, yes, but the rest of it.
It's the state park, right?
Part of it is, so I, I can't really answer that. I think that's been a conversation of debate for a couple of years now, so I'm, I'm not even gonna enter that one.
I think that the gentleman who lives up there, he put that in there, or some of it.
No, the road's been there forever, but.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even.
Three roads up in there.
Have that conversation now.
You retired from the law.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Will the results, or some of the results of the vol, what is it, vulner?
MVP. Just call it the MVP.
MVP.
Yeah.
Feed into the LCP?
Um, actually, they probably will for future planning, absolutely. Um, I think it's a very timely, um, you know.
I didn't know if it was.
Very timely.
A, a part of it, a precursor to the LCP.
Our consultant will gather all the comments made at the, um, the meeting on the thirty-first. They will compile that. They will then do a presentation that anybody and everybody can come to, and, and, you know, that's when we really wanna hear from folks as well. You know, not just the stakeholders, but the public at large. And, hey, we're almost done. And, um, the, uh, then it would go to the state and get approved by the state as an MVP for Harwich. And it also opens us up for, um, a lot of grant money. A lot of grant money. There's a lot of grant money out there. The town, the state is really backing this and has been supporting this now for a number of years, and, and I think a number of years to come.
Yeah. Gotta face it.
Yep. Yep.
Minutes should reflect that Mr. Peterson's in attendance.
Okay, so now we can adjourn?
Make the motion.
No.
Let me make the motion?
Not quite yet. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Sir, you had something, and you, you come in late.
Under the other business you had there for the discussion on Queen Anne Road, I didn't know if you made any discussion or anything.
No, because of your lot, we're trying to get that in the right spot. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's Alan's lot.
You need to identify himself first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alan Hall and my cousin Edward Hall. So, what's the problem now?
Because your lot on the assessor's map is in the wrong place. We need to correct that and make sure it's in the right place so we can get the description of the district correctly. So, it's either gonna come back to the board on the twenty-eighth of January or the eleventh of February. We're still good.
I saw your packet, page forty-two. That looked okay to me.
Yeah, we still.
It, it had my, our land in the area.
It, it does, but because of the description that we are gonna include so people can really pinpoint it, we wanna make sure yours is in the right place.
And one other question. Postponing it won't have any impact on submitting an article to the town warrant?
No.
Okay, I just wanna make sure because.
Nope, nope.
As a citizen, I could also petition it.
Nope.
So, I don't wanna miss anything.
I promise it won't get missed.
Okay.
What's the size of your property there?
We have a six-acre parcel and a two-and-a-half-acre parcel.
Between you?
The two of us.
I got you. Okay. Anything else?
It'll, don't worry.
I'm just doing my due diligence.
Stay in touch.
Yeah, cuz I know. Thank you very much.
I think he has me on speed dial.
Good, good.
We just wanna make sure.
That's why we're here.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay. We have any other briefings or reports?
Historical commission?
Um, historic is meeting tomorrow night for our monthly meeting. We have lots of applications.
Okay.
Yep. And meetings will start on the West Harwich DCPC. My, my husband slipped and fell, and we find out tomorrow when he's having surgery, so I've not been able to schedule anything till I know what, what he's doing, so.
I, I understand it's DCPC, but what hearings will we hold?
Um, once we start getting into ideas about zoning, they'll be vetted through the planning board for discussion.
Okay.
To, you know, iron them out, get them where they need to be before they go the route like we did tonight with essential services. You won't vote to refer anything until we're like, T's crossed and I's dotted and as thorough as we can possibly be.
And I assume the aim is to try to get it done at this town meeting?